Nineteen thirty-six hours.
Okay.
Second.
Ready for the vote?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Alright.
Okay, uh, no, no, um, minutes. No bills.
I don't think we have anything that big. That's fine. No bills. Minutes to approve?
None.
Nope. Alright, it moves on to, uh, Willis. What are we doing with bills?
Not bills.
Oh, bills.
No bills.
No bills, alright, so it moves up to Nichols Village.
Yeah, why don't we just go to Nichols Village?
That was the best part, right?
The bus is out there, so let's go.
Alright.
Yeah, those two units, we may need them. The way we're going. Alright.
So we have the, a, a copy of the memorandum, right? So this is the findings and decisions?
Well, it's kinda like a draft.
It's a draft, okay, so we have a draft. Do they have a copy of the draft?
I don't think so.
No, we didn't give them one.
Okay.
But...
Do we have one to give them?
We got one.
Okay.
There you go.
Is that for us?
There you go, taking an agenda too.
Shows you were here. Alright.
You know, one of the-
Is there some other conditions on it, uh, Jim?
Yeah, the condition on, on that was, um, one, two, three, uh, three... Page three, page four, the deal on page five. Uh, I need to tell you which number it is. It's number nine on page five.
Yep.
And...
Ten forty-five, okay.
It, it's, it's just, and it's, you have to donate to deed restricted units to the Town of Groveland Affordable Housing Authority.
Okay.
Yeah.
Ten point, this is ten point one five.
They say the ownership of the, of the organization. It's just they have to be used for affordable purposes.
What's the, um-
Deed restricted just for mean, meaning that the unit has to go to someone of low income.
So what's the-
The ownership is still-
What's the cutoff on that now? You, uh, those numbers have moved around so much.
I don't know what you mean. Oh, you mean current affordable?
Yeah.
That you have to, uh, go to a bank because it, it changes as the interest rate changes.
Okay, so roughly, yeah.
So, I mean, generally, a condominium unit roughly, last I knew, but it's changed because the mortgage rates have gone up. Last I knew it was like a hundred and thirty-five to a hundred and forty thousand if for condo.
Right.
Uh, homes, we have not had a, an affordable home go on the market because all the affordables we have up in condos. But I've heard that it's somewhere around the two hundred to two twenty-five mark.
And these are units, right, or these condos?
Uh, no, these are units, but we don't, we don't sell, they're not, they're not sold.
They're lease, they're leaseholds.
Right, does they, there's a, uh, there's two different models, some are rental.
Right.
And some are called lifetime refundable tenancy. So they pay a refundable fee, then when they leave, they get this fee or portion of it back.
Yeah, okay.
So they make a, a significant payment, but then they get a refund.
But they make an entrance, entrance fee payment.
Yeah, okay.
To enter, and then they pay a monthly, uh, common fee.
Right, everybody pays a common fee, and some would pay rent in addition.
For their, their food, because they get twenty meals a month.
Okay.
And, uh, for the swimming pool, the aerobic center, gymnasium that they have access to, health club, um, and all the other amenities to go with it. House clean, housekeeping, uh, you know, they get housekeeping all done, and sheet, sheets washed.
Oh, there you go.
I mean, it's a, it's not like a, a normal apartment house or anything, you know?
It's got full service, so-
The amenities that they have.
Yeah. So what, does-
That's why we would like to be able to use the fee in lieu of, maybe we thought it was more applicable to our mode of operation than, than, uh, the deed, but-
So how, how do you do that if, um-
May I, may I ask why? Given what your charter is for your trust? Why would you want to do a fee in lieu of, uh, may I ask?
I think it's just consistent with how we've operated it, and it'd be uniform throughout the property to continue the way we've, we've done it.
Okay, so how many, I know you guys don't like to disclose, and there's no need to, although you are a, a charity, so all your financials are out there online anyways, so there's really nothing.
What do you want, what do you want to know?
How many are, how many are being leased by, uh, low-income seniors as we speak? How many units?
We, we, since we've opened in two thousand and four, since the board granted us the permit then, which we're amending, trying to amend now, um, not amend, but, uh-
Lot of time, yeah.
We certified, um, we probably, to, to low-income subsidies, we've probably given, I, I was with Linda today. About a half a million dollars.
How many people? Because your, your, your charitable trust-
How many units you mean?
Yes.
Yeah, probably, it varies, sometimes it's three or four, uh, many is five, sometimes it's two, it, it, it varies how many.
What was highest, nine or ten?
But they were, but some had, some are bad minimum, I mean, lower than the, the Lawrence standard, or whatever that guideline is.
Do you know we have a two-year waiting list to get into the Groveland Housing Authority? It's not that they're not out there.
Is there space over there?
No, there's a two-year wait-
Is there s- space, land, to add on?
The council aging wants to use it to build their building.
Yeah, not, not now, because they want to build, uh, housing for-
We own that between the building and the police park, well, the parking lot, down almost to about ten feet off that building. When I was on the Affordable Housing Committee.
Yeah.
We, we wanted to partner with someone to put up another building.
Yeah.
But the current, but the housing authority at the time, the board members back then did not want to partner with the town, and at the time, we did not have CPA funds.
Okay.
Available, so we had no money to, like, contribute to it.
Right.
Other than the land. We were gonna give the land and then see if we could do a deal like we did last time with the feds, and work with the current, because that's a federal housing authority.
Oh.
That's not the town, even though it says Town of Groveland.
Right.
It's a federal housing complex.
Okay, so what about right here on this complex that goes all the way back to the river? Is there a place where, where we could use CPA funds for the Town of Groveland and put a building up?
That's beyond my, you'd have to, and, uh, we have well fields, so you're restricted because we're in zone one of the well fields.
Couldn't get into that because of the wells, I guarantee you.
You gotta remember, we have the new well, uh, back.
Yeah.
Okay, so what's-
Well, we're, what I had thought about long now, a few years now, is since we bought all that land, you know, when the Center Street pit.
Well, that was originally supposed to be an overlay, yeah.
That if you had some of that land up against Center Street.
Yeah.
You go in there and you put in like a hundred and twenty units, that you, you partner with a, a developer at that point, and what you do is you offer him an incentive he can't refuse. You lease the land to him for one dollar a year. Okay, and what he does is he collects the rents, but twenty-five percent, these would all be apartments.
Yeah.
Would be lower income, okay, and, but the whole thing would count.
Right, that's, that's, we were gonna do a Brooksbys Village type thing, was the original Wayback Plan for that location.
You know, it, it'd be a no-frills type situation.
Yeah.
Um, I haven't met anybody yet moving upward than these board of selectmen that wants to hear it.
Okay.
At this point, okay? So, you know, you, you can't take something forward, even though I think the idea would work, and, you know, it's, what I thought about was Lenny Mira, who built-
Yeah, over there.
That complex over Georgetown, and I mean, that took them the thirteen and a half percent, bang.
Yeah.
You know? Solved all their problems.
Alright, so moving on this for a second, if, um, it sounds like you're doing some affordable housing, and it's a mix, whether it's two or nine, or, on the units that currently go in and out in the flow.
Right.
We need apartments in Groveland, I mean, that's been highlighted so many times, I mean, in my twenty-five years here, uh, you know, when we did that initial study way back, that was one of the things that we did, the, the initial town study, there's, there's no place for, for apartments, any, anywhere in there. So, so Debbie, would it make sense, because the town does have parcels of land scattered around, with that big piece that we were just talking about with overlays, to put money into the Affordable Housing Fund so that we can pick a location and put designated apartments only?
This bylaw.
Yeah.
Okay, you can't take paragraph by paragraph and just say, oh, well, it says this fee in lieu of. Ten dot one, on page sixty of the bylaw.
Yeah.
Okay, ten dot one, dot five, dot two, it says for projects resulting in increase of four to nine units, then the applicant may choose to do that payment in lieu of.
Right.
Okay? And then you go to the payment in lieu of, and it talks about the payment in lieu of.
Right.
When you hit ten.
Yeah.
There is no provision.
Okay, that's what we're trying to find.
There has to be an affordable-
The question would be where does it say for ten units?
Ten, that's what I'm trying to find out.
Because that, that's why it's worded overnight, I mean, to nine.
But it doesn't say it.
Well, okay, we can make that argument, and that would be something that's above my pay grade. Um, all as I know is most of the developers understood it, and there hasn't been any question, and this bylaw actually came from another town that's been tested, so that's mine. I mean, Nichols Trust can do whatever they want, and you as a board can make that decision. Me, as a person.
Yeah.
Because I am quite familiar with the trust, I was on the, I'm working the assessor's office, they came to us many years ago when they were building to be non-taxable.
Right.
So I took an extreme interest in this because we had quite a battle at that point, and, um, so I got quite familiar with the trust, and I've been following the trust. And my, my stand is, and what it was at the last meeting that I went to, is if you read their Articles of Incorporation, read the side pre that was granted, they, their majority of their housing up there should be affordable. Not nine, not ten percent of the units, not five percent of the units. Most of the units should be affordable up there. There, and, and that's written in the trust.
In there, yeah.
As a board, although you can't address that, that's an issue that's really not your issue. Your issue here is the twenty units, whether they choose to, or whether or not you say, yeah, okay, go ahead and make this payment. Either way, I'm going to the state. I'm filing a complaint that the trust is not adhering, because the Town of Groveland, if you read those documents, is a beneficiary of this trust. Okay? Any surplus revenue was supposed to go to the town, the board members are supposed to be from the town, the first choice of residents up there is supposed to be coming from the Town of Groveland. Mr. Nichols was quite clear in this, and I don't, you know, like I said, this is beyond your purview, this really isn't a planning board thing. So, your issue here, and my argument is, I was on the board when we wrote this bylaw. The bylaw's intent was to allow for people to make a contribution for a subdivision, or a division, or an addition of units of nine or under. If you feel as though it's not clear, and you feel comfortable, that's not my decision, I'm not on the planning board, okay? That, I'm just telling you, the intent of this bylaw was and is, anything ten and more has to give us a unit, whether it be a subdivision, whether it be an apartment complex, whatever it may be. Now, if they, they choose, or you choose to write in your decision, they choose to appeal, that's fine by me, then let, let, like I said, higher pay grades figure this out. You know, that's beyond my pay grade. All as I can tell you is what the intent of the bylaw has been, and, and to be, to be honest, it hasn't worked out the way we intended, because at the time, there were some pretty big projects in, in, in the works, correct?
Yeah.
And they, they didn't happen.
Well, what they did is they meant, everybody went into the nine.
Right, exactly.
And everybody went to nine, and they gave the money, so the town got a ton of money, but we didn't get to use.
And it's sitting there waiting, and hopefully, we will, we can partner, like I even, as I stated to you guys, I don't know if you were here when I, when I brought this up, because Mr. DeHulu was here, and he's getting quite active in town, doing more than just a single house here and there, he's, he's starting to do some developments.
Right.
The town, using CPA funds and using the money that has started to accumulate in the Affordable Housing, um, um, uh, account, could partner with a developer, even if they don't fall in this and are doing a smaller subdivision, we could say, hey, we want, would you do one of those affordable? And we would kick in the money to make it so his numbers work, because obviously, they're, they're made of money.
CPA funds can do a lot, and that's why we're putting money in there.
They're not, they're not there, so, I mean, but again, your issue today is whether or not Nichols Trust, with their expansion of their units, are allowed to do a payment in lieu of, or whether or not they do the two units. My feeling is, will be, and always will be, that they should be made to do the two units, period.
Debbie, can we answer your question? You asked why, why we wanted to make the payment in lieu instead of, uh, the, the two units. Um, I think it's, uh, to begin with, we had a public hearing, and I don't think anyone showed up against the project at the, well-advertised public hearing. Right now, as I said, we have amenities in addition to the monthly rent, if you rent. The renters also pay a common fee in addition to the rent. Uh, I can, I have the, the list, the payment, would you like to see the, the payment schedule, or?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's, we don't wanna-
I have members for, I have copies for all the board here.
Okay.
Bob?
While he's passing that out, Nichols Village where they were built, it's ninety-six units currently, I believe, and soon to be, whatever, twenty units more. Based on those number of units, the Town of Groveland has to provide ten more for, we've lost, because we have to provide per, for chapter forty-B, uh, ten units to make up for Nichols Village. Okay, so the only thing Nichols Village has done is make it so that we fell behind, which we were very far forward in our affordable housing, um, endeavors, um, to create affordable housing. So Nichols Village only made that number worse, because the way that's calculated is the number of legal residences. Doesn't matter how they're owned.
Yeah.
Can be condos, can be apartments, can be leases.
But Debbie, that, that's not Nichols Village, that's any subdivision, that, that's any subdivision that you may-
No, but, but, but this is unique in what, like I said, if you took the time to read that paperwork, what their charge is. So this is unique in this, that not only, in my opinion, are they not providing for the indigent elders.
Yeah.
Of Groveland and the surrounding communities, but they've also hurt the Town of Groveland for our Affordable Housing Count, making us go lower in the percentage of what we have affordable, because we have very little affordable housing available.
Yeah.
Um, even with the fortyBs that came online. Um, like I said, there was one in the pipeline when all this was going on, didn't happen, now the town owns that property. So, I only know of one site where the current landowner is contemplating a fortyB, pretty substantial one, given the size of the property, but, um, he hasn't presented it yet, nor has he made a final decision on it yet. So we have not really, we have not, uh, added.
Yeah.
To our how, affordable housing stock, since I think the last time we did was when Lindsay's Way was built in, what was that, two thousand and eight?
Yeah, it's World Bar.
Or seven, six?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, somewhere around there.
So, are you-
Units out of that, that's all.
Are you bringing this forward as, as the assessor, as the town, or as yourself?
Just as myself.
Oh, okay, so, I'm just trying to figure out where, where we're getting at now.
It's nothing, if, I, I presented this to the selectmen.
Yeah.
If they, so, I, with the recommendation, the selectmen take it on, because the town, again, in my opinion, is a beneficiary of this in, in a roundabout way, not directly, but a roundabout way, and I think the town should take an interest in it. Now, whether or not the selectmen do, that's, uh, up to the select.
So, uh, just, just top, top of my head, or top of your head, uh, do we have any Grovelandites up there?
What's that?
Do we have any people from Groveland up there?
Oh my lord, it's primarily far, first father residents of Groveland.
Okay.
The, the will stated that, and the, uh, I believe it carries on to side pre. But Debbie brings up the side pre, initially, Debbie is right, the will stated it was for the aged indigent of Groveland.
Yeah.
But to build a home, in, in nineteen twenty-five, when the will was written.
Oh.
There was, um, a poorhouse where, where people couldn't afford to live on their own, they went to the poorhouse. Well, we didn't want to build a poorhouse for, for, for the residents of Groveland in this day and age, so we, we applied to the, um, probate court for side pre to, to, to moderate the terms of the will, that it would, that, in addition to, uh, indigent who we would address, it would also be for all financial, and, and, uh, all levels of financial ability. Uh, in other words, we didn't want just poor people there, we wanted, uh, lower class, middle class, upper class, we want, and we do have that whole ball of wax for, for-
So how many do we have, ten, twenty, thirty, fifty?
How many what?
Groveland residents.
Hundred and seventeen people live there.
How many Groveland residents?
I'd say more than half, I, I can be a number.
Alright, so, so we're fulfilling that, that a- aspect of it, we do, i- if there's a number ten in here, and I was around when this thing was written too, and I understand the, how developers got around that, um, but we got a, we got a glitch in here that mentions the ten, um, it, so the board's gonna, you know, make a decision, which it has the authority to do on the, on the fees in lieu of. I would much rather see myself, and this has been my quest with Affordable Housing since we started, that whole master plan, was to put in of, you know, apartments, man, you know, that would just be apartments for the Town of Groveland, and that's why we did that whole master plan, uh, whole overlay district, Brooksbys Village, uh, Ballfields, everything down in the Center Street project area, but we do have all the parcels in town where they could build duplexes or something else to get the apartments up, and we're gonna need the funding to do so. So I, I guess it comes down to the board's flavor, if, if it's the intent of the town to change this, then we have to change this as a town, to see if number ten's in there.
Like I said, you could, you could pick it apart and read just the payment in lieu of. That payment in lieu of section only applies, like I said, that first section addresses the four to nine.
Yeah.
And then the payment in lieu of applies.
Yeah.
And the rest of it is, then they have to provide units based on that chart, meaning the number of units, the, uh, uh, the estimated rent, in the case of houses, it would be estimated sale price, you gotta find out from the developer what the, what the sale price is gonna be, how many percent over-
Right, right, we do that.
Affordable, then you calculate out the units, okay?
Debbie, maybe you could explain to us, because we can't figure out how, how we do it, and maybe you and the board can, but, uh, if, if, uh-
No, we can't.
If you, if you, you can either buy it or rent it, one of those units, correct?
I, I, it-
On Affordable Housing, you can either buy it or rent it.
Yes, well, yeah, yes, I would assume so, yeah, yeah.
Purchase or rent. So if you bought one, and it went for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Correct.
It would be a, a lower percentage of that for the purchase price on the Affordable Housing.
Yes, yes, yes.
Then you still have the, um, monthly fees to pay, uh, seventy, probably-
Yeah, condo fees, yeah.
Probably seventeen hundred and fifty dollars a month, in addition to the purchase price. Many, many of the people qualifying w- would not qualify to purchase, they, they would probably be relegated to a rental unit instead of a, a purchase, uh, because they, they couldn't come up with the, whatever it is, seventy percent of the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
If it's a homeownership unit, there's different, you know, the, Chappa and, and, and the banks have it all figured out, yeah, they have the-
It's very difficult to get a loan from a bank for a unit in Nichols Village, because there's no deed.
Right.
You don't dare deed.
It would be treated as an apartment.
Yeah.
But again, I'll go back to my argument of what your trust was set up to do. I mean, I, I, I don't know how I-
Could I have one thing as well for this?
Yeah.
So, so in addition to the internal subsidy provided to residents, which has been from two to nine over time.
Yeah.
The foundation has subsidized all of the residents, essentially from the beginning, because the foundation has been paying the debt service on Nichols Village. Nichols Village Inc. had taken out debt to, to construct the, the village.
Yeah.
So what Nichols Foundation was doing was paying that, so the, the debt service was about thirty, thirty percent or more of the total budget. So I would make the case that the fees have been artistically lowered for all residents by about thirty percent from the very beginning. Do you follow me on that?
Yeah, I'm following it on everything, and the town, just based on what you said.
Residents have been paying their fees, but they haven't been paying anything towards any of the debt service, the foundation has contributed fully to cover that for them.
The Town of Groveland could, with CPA money, actually downright buy two units, or three units, or four units, whatever the money we had, at Nichols Village, and then the Town of Groveland can dictate who goes there, and then the maintenance fees would be paid by the individuals going in.
The town doesn't need to do that, and, and, you know, I, I, you guys do what you want, I'm just gonna read to you the paragraph from the side pre, okay? This was their side pre, okay? I read it to you before, I'm gonna read it to you again.
Yeah.
Paragraph D, section I, it's, uh, the following constitutes reasonable deviations from the terms of the trust, expanding the class of beneficiaries under the trust to be first, I do emphasize first, indigent aged men and women, and then second, aged men and women who can afford to pay for their occupancy of the home. That's their side pre, that was their relief. The relief from the will was to open it up to second people who could afford it, and the other part of the side pre was to allow them to build on a different site, because they wanted to build something bigger that would not fit on the Garrison Street site, and I think bullet, and some internal changes to their board or what have you. But, other than that, the state, through the probate court, that is what they are under, in that, if you look at both of their Articles of Incorporation for both Nichols Village Inc. and N. Woodburn's Nichols, um, uh, the two entities that they operate under, under the Articles of Incorporation, tho- those same words are in there. Okay, so I, I, all as I can say is I don't understand why it's even an issue, because the town hasn't even pushed. Again, I told you, and I'll use this mu- the, the number, because I know it, it, it's probably unreasonable, but in my opinion, based on this paperwork I have in my hand, that was ordered by the court, seventy-five percent of those units should be affordable. That's my opinion, and I will stand by that, and like I said, but, but that's beyond, like I said, again, your piece of the world is this, the twenty units.
Actually, probably, based on what Jared just said, I, I'm probably to assume since we opened, a hundred percent of our units, nearly a hundred percent of our units have been affordable, because the only, the half a million dollars in subsidies are paid directly to the people. We, we've also, until our mortgage ran out last mon- about a month ago, uh, we've been paying a hundred thousand dollars to TD Bank a month on principal and interest, and, you know-
Yeah, but that's true of anybody who builds, any developer.
No, Nichols Village has not been paying that, Nichols Foundation has been paying that as a donate, as a contribution to Nichols Village.
Because that's what you're suppo- that's part of your-
Well, I'm saying, we are subsidizing it now.
But that's the purpose of the foundation.
Plus, we're giving another half a million dollars to the residents that are living there, so we have been-
We've had a lot of offset improvements and stuff too.
Well, we'll leave that up to the state to decide whether, whether-
You know how many taxes we've been paying, they've been paying pretty good, pretty good taxes there too.
Yeah.
And we're paying more, we'll be paying more if, if in their, in their good judgment, we get this permit.
So, um, back to the board then, I, I think, on this, on this here, um, based upon the, a little bit of confusion on this thing that three of us have eyeballed onto that, um, and I think the town could use the, the funding so we can make our own, um, onto that. So, uh, I'll fly a motion to accept the fees in lieu of, because it, it doesn't say anything over nine in this bylaw, we're gonna have to change this.
Okay, then what do I do to appeal that? I'll file an appeal once you do that decision.
We did bring the check, I don't know if you want that tonight, Jim?
I think, I think it should be in your custody.
We don't take it right away, you know, like I said, it's-
Well, she might.
Once, once, once you-
Well, Debbie can sit about this one.
I don't care, yes, it's made up with Town of Groveland, I'm the planning board, I'm giving it to the planning board.
Yeah.
Then I will be filing an appeal.
As a, as a person?
Yes.
Okay, and, and-
And then I'll, I'll give it to the state.
If it's a private person, then we still could approve the check, and then-
Yeah, well, we, the board doesn't make a decision, I get a motion out there, I need a second to, to do that because of the confliction in, in the bylaw.
I don't see, why do you say this inflection?
Because it doesn't say anything about over nine.
Well, my major problem is- It addresses the number of units.
Right.
It, it doesn't need to, it only needs to address what is covered under the payment in lieu of.
And it still says on the, on paragraph C that it can be in the will.
The problem is that the following paragraph says that units in a multiple unit development subject to this bylaw shall be established as affordable units in any one of the combination of the methods below, and fee in lieu of is still listed there, is the problem.
Right, because they refer, yeah.
That, that's the only confusion I see, it's clearly, once you get above nine, something else takes hold, but it's still listed as an option.
Our attorney could not be here tonight, he's on vacation in Arizona, but we talked to him, and he said he, he feel, he felt, and looking at the law and the, your, your rules and regulations here, that it was within your purview to approve this.
As a special permit, it is.
This is where it says four to nine.
We went over it last week. I second the motion. I second the motion to take the payment of the. Instead of. Already motioned.
Yeah, motion, he's seconded, and we've still gotta vote. Yea, yere, nee.
Doesn't say over nine, though, right, is that what you're saying?
That's where the problem is.
It doesn't say over nine, and it says it's still an option.
But it doesn't say it.
On that. And the next question is, is it still eighty thousand?
You know what, you've made that decision, you figure it out.
It's for a hundred and sixty thousand, so if it's, if it isn't.
I, I believe so, I think it talks about rounding, point, point four units would be up to the next, but I think point four is.
Exactly.
So twenty-one units, two point one.
It all depends on the financials of it, once you get the financials of it, what the unit sells for, then you can calculate what they are, which I think that check will be.
So, so we have to.
Too much money, to, in my opinion, based on what the calculations are supposed to be.
I think it's the lesser option, the eighty thousand, we assume that was.
Yeah, that's what we've been doing for a long time, is eighty thousand.
Yeah, but it's been on eight houses, they're about six hundred thousand dollars apiece. Even though they have found something in this law now, we don't mention the word land and house. So now what they're doing is they're selling the land first for two hundred thousand, and then the house second for four hundred and fifty thousand.
It doesn't matter, they sell, division of the land, the division of land, it's covered, it, it, there's. Multiple ways and, and even trying to change owners. Like, yeah, like the poor person who comes in and the land's been already subdivided.
Says you can't buy it from, you can't sell it for more than seventy-five percent.
Can't get around that by changing owners and transferring ownership.
Okay.
So.
I mean, the, the, you know, it, it is cumbersome to navigate through this, Debbie, and. God knows, I've taken the lead in this for quite some time, you know, I have been able to run some numbers and stuff like that.
That's okay, it's been challenging in the past, and town council took a look at it, and it's, it's fine, wants to file the appeal, it, it's, it can go that route.
I mean, if, if it were mine, if it were mine.
And that way there'll be clarification on.
Not that I wanna, that I wanna go out and rewrite one of these things, I'd rather look at somebody else.
Doesn't need to be rewritten, I mean, the only thing is, maybe a paragraph needs to be moved so it doesn't come, read that way, right. That sounds to me like it's just.
That's why all this stuff should be living documents, and when we find these, we should, we should be correcting it.
Well, like I said, it's not, yeah, I'm surprised that this organization is challenging that, that's all.
It's just that, what I'm trying to say is that, if we're gonna do it, you know, from four to whenever. Why don't we just do it from one to whenever? Hit everybody, hit A and R's.
Because that's too, too, um, financially. Challenging for a smaller subdivision, that's why it was written, it's, like I said, this is not the first of its kind. This is, this is, this has been in the Commonwealth and other communities for years. It's not the only, we are not the only community that has this. It was stolen from another community, so it's not, it's not that this is, it's not, this is not new u- unique. What is unique is the, this organization that's challenging it, which is amazing that we have developers come in. And have adhered by our affordable housing bylaw in this, in this trust format.
Well, I, I disagree with that statement, but we have a live motion that we need to call a vote, yea, yere, nee.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Lisa? Well, I'll make it unanimous on that side. But I think, you know, what. I think we're gonna have to make some changes, if that's what means.
I agree, you're on my day.
Yeah, I think we need a, a follow-up motion to clean up the language for future people, so there's no doubt.
No, that's that.
As to what that is, but that's not your fault, that's us, that's on us too.
Well, we, we, I mean, we feel this is helping to supply the town more affordable housing at some point, as you said, Wally, with, with more funds for the town, right?
That's one of the main reasons why we got this thing in and accepted it, was to build our own.
And I agree, I mean, I think, you know, we're a developer, we could do affordable housing in town, you, you've got, you've got others that can do this, I think it's an attractive place to do it, and if you have the right developer come in. You'd be able to hit the forty B requirement in no time.
I think what we should be reviewing soon with all the CPA money that's adding up, is, is Debbie, you know, the best person asked about this, where, where is there town land that could support apartments? Whether it be five or ten or something like that, it's gotta be.
There is very little town land that anybody's willing to get, let go of. You've got Pine's Rack.
Yeah.
Okay, you've got Shanahan Field.
We're a little right here behind the apartment.
It has a well field.
What's the distance?
Well, it's four hundred, but now they're even talking about it.
Cause you have the river.
Yeah.
Back on the river.
Is there any plans?
We got the front yard.
Garrison Street.
You got Center Street Pits.
How about in your area, you've got an extra lot of land.
I think we get ten units.
Any plans for Garrison Street in the future?
We, we don't have any plans for, really, uh. We, uh, initially wanted to build that, you know, Bob.
Yeah.
And, uh, well, we had it surveyed, I, I thought, forget those, Cameron Engineering, and Sergio, Sergio and Sergio, one of them did it. And they found a couple acres of wetlands there, so that, that cranked it down, and, uh, now, uh, now it's a hayfield.
Have to change this too.
Right.
But we haven't, many developers have wanted to come in and buy it, and I, I was instrumental in buying it ago, in case the. Nichols Village, you haven't needed it for housing for staff.
I'm all set with it.
But, uh, so far we've been, we haven't had any staff requirements.
One page.
Well, that's what you gotta do, you gotta reuse. Who wrote this?
Me.
Okay.
For the most part.
Okay, so we need a motion to accept with a modification, uh, or correction, or modification to.
Number nine, page five.
Number nine, page five, the Nichols Village special permit. Mod.
I would have to simply take out the words.
So here to the paragraph, what was that, ten C, ten one?
Ten one five.
I'd take out the words to deed it.
So here to second, ten point one five.
And, and how much is the check?
Five one Charlie. Yeah, but it's in sub-paragraph C.
I guess it would be ten one five.
How much is the check?
It's at one sixty.
One sixty, thanks.
One sixty.
And donate one sixty.
Okay. Yeah, per ten point one five one Charlie. One five three Charlie. Okay. Alright, and then, okay, so, so motion and.
I was, I thought it was on. Am I on your way?
No, I'll just get around it.
We already voted.
We voted, uh, we motioned, we didn't, did we get a second on this to vote this thing?
Yeah.
Did we get that, okay, this is good, okay.
Okay.
Alright, so that's done, and then.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Boom, boom, boom.
Okay. Debbie, how much is in CPA, do you know?
CPA is a different fund.
Well, they had a part of that, there's a.
How much is in the affordable housing?
Well, there's, there's, I think.
Three hundred and some odd dollars.
Three forty.
You haven't had that, you haven't had that many.
There's three forty in, uh, of affordable housing money.
There's two different funds.
Half a million was designated from CPA, but it still sits in CPA.
Okay, so that's fine, so combined with this, we'd have a million, roughly.
Yeah, a million bucks.
Roughly.
Well, well, yeah, not quite, but yeah.
Okay, close enough.
That won't go far.
No, it won't, no.
If we owned the land, what, what's it cost to put up a, a five or six unit set of apartments, what's it cost now?
Well, let's say it's gonna cost three million to put up a senior center, so you tell me.
You're talking.
Yeah, you're talking a lot of money.
Three, three hundred, three hundred and fifty thousand a unit? So if you wanna do thirty units, ten million dollars.
We're talking a square, we're talking.
Sixty-year-old square, square.
We're talking about two hundred and fifty, fifty dollars a square foot.
And, yeah, and these are, and these are, those are like, very, pretty typical standard apartments, we're talking, you know, not, not.
And, and that's, it's not, that's nothing fancy either.
So we get, can we get a green?
The only way we could do it is by, uh, there are grant monies that are available, and then combination of what the town has accumulated, and applying for federal grants. If we had the land, then you could do something.
So that's.
And then turn it over, just like we did back in the, in the eighties, when we did Groveland Housing Authority, that's exactly what we did, we deeded the land over. We got a grant, and we had a management company build it, and we turned over. Turned it over formally to the housing authority.
So why would you, huh? Who would spearhead a grant to see what's avail, what department does that?
We tried doing that years ago, but the council on aging wanted a, wanted a piece of the action, and because they did, the, there's no grant monies available for something like that. Um, if we did strictly housing, there are, there is, continues to be funding for that. But the primary site where we wanted to put it was over here, it's got sewers, it's got the infrastructure, it could have been made to match the current building. But, um, if, depending on what happens at town meeting, that may or, you know, may or may not be an option going, going forward.
Alright, so if the four million dollars senior center flunks, then we could put three units, like, three million.
It's gonna be four.
Well, I'll just say.
Come on, that, tell, tell the truth, come on, it is gonna be four.
The article is written for it.
Yeah, but it's gonna be four.
I'm not saying what the end result will be.
Yes, I know, alright, it's gonna be four, so.
So we have, w- we have things that the town needs to be looking in for, for the housing, and, and I think that, that we need to figure out a grant or something, and, and we go in with our matching funds to get this thing started. See money, whatever you wanna call it, from the affordable housing, but we need to be working on that, I mean, no one's getting younger. Um, onto that, so it's something we gotta start looking at, but I don't know what, is that something you handle, or is that something Denise handles?
I've got enough to handle, thanks.
So.
I'm way older than you are, dear, so, yeah, I, I'm, I'm, I'm near the end of my handling space.
It'll work better if a developer did it.
I was just, I was just gonna say, could I add one thing, I think, I think a private developer doing it is the best way to go, because they have access to the sources of funds, they're gonna know who to apply to, they're gonna know what tax credits. They're gonna be able to run this whole thing for you, and I think that if the town is willing to do a ground lease with a long-term developer, seventy-five year ground lease, let them build it, let them develop it. If that's what you want for affordable housing, there's ways to do that, so.
So if we put that out for what, um, request for production and see if we can.
Well, that, well, that's what we sort of did, a developer did that, you know, they built it, and we just kinda, we were just kind of facilitating it.
That's the way to go, you, you need somebody, there's so much nuance to this, there's so many different sources.
Yeah.
Right.
You need somebody that, that can, you need consultants, you need, you need people who are sophisticated.
Okay, so that's fine, but how do we get it going?
Call me, call me, on behalf of Bethany Community Services, not Nichols Village, we manage properties, we do affordable housing.
You said that before, yes.
So we can talk about, you don't have to hire us, but we, we can, we can talk about it, because CPA, affordable housing, tax credits.
Bethany does affordable housing.
Can you put together a proposal for the town of Groveland? There aren't much else to do.
It's kinda hard to open up something else. He, he needs to figure out where it's gonna go first.
Number one, this is something they don't do for free, okay? Um, this takes, oh, uh, Wally, uh, this is something that takes, number one, you need to figure out a site, engineering wise, whether or not it's possible. And then you go and say to someone like him.
Yeah.
Hey, we're thinking of doing this, we'd like to partner with you.
Right, I get, I get that, right.
And do that, okay, so.
I kinda meant on the very elementary intro level like this. Produce one of these babies and say, we could do this, and we've highlighted maybe two sites where it could go in your town, and if you would like us to look into that.
Yeah.
We could do it, and that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, that's the first step, site control and feasibility.
An intro level, not costing a fortune to do, and do something.
It's gonna cost a fortune to do, period, it, it just matter who does it cost the fortune to, and is it granted or not.
So a key to this too, is for, for nonprofits, which we are, nonprofit developers have access to some soft funds out there to do some exploration that for-profits don't. Of course, for-profits just have money, so they can go and do it, but there's ways to do it, alright?
Yeah.
You guys, if you, if you wanna pursue it, there's ways you can develop more truly affordable, uh, you know, tax credit slash, uh, whatever you wanna call it, so you can, you can do it.
But we still need someone to come in and say, you, the town of Groveland can do this to the selectmen.
Right.
Our board, a few other boards.
I think it, it matters as far as, you know, no developer, it's true, developers wanna make money, right? So it's, it's what's the town's goals, do you, do you wanna make money, or do you wanna have affordable housing here for people? You're gonna win anyway, because you're gonna have taxes in the long run, you're gonna have real estate tax and development, you have services, more water, more, all, all these things, right? So, how much does the town wanna make off an initial acquisition, or do they wanna do a ground lease and just say, hey, we're trying to meet our mission? It's, it's what you, it's what you want.
If you did all apartments, seventy-five percent at market, twenty-five percent affordable.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, you know, you, the whole thing counts at that point, that's where we're after, we're anything else.
No, the other way around, twenty-five percent, seventy, yeah, that's what they did at, uh, Longwood, Longview in Georgia. Uh, the one out by the ninety-five there.
Yeah.
That's a forty B, that was, uh, they had to do twenty-five percent affordable in all the units coming. It's a quirk in the, it's a quirk in the forty B law, as opposed to rentals.
They only had to do twenty-five percent actually affordable, yet ever so little it counts towards there.
That's only if it's rentals, not homeownership.
They can count them while I don't.
Yeah.
It's, see, like, these, the condominiums here, okay? Um, forty-three units, uh, eleven or twelve, eleven are affordable, only eleven count.
Where's the rest of it?
Except for homeownership. If those were rental units owned by a person, all forty-three units were counted. Yeah, it's just, it's just the way the law's written, it's a quirk, you're not in the law.
Excuse me, Jim.
Oh, sorry, one other thing, I just wanna make sure for the record, we did deliver these documents, Jim.
See if they can find any that are already Groveland's.
I think Jim was out of the room, I just wanted to make sure he knows that we delivered our sets of plans here on the table, and the, and the flash jammers are there as well.
Alright.
And I did have just one other question about timing on this, I know there's a twenty-day appeal period as far as that, does that start now, does that start when this is written?
Starts timestamp tomorrow.
Well, yeah, we have a Mylar sign, or what, we're gonna hold these.
We don't, we can, we need to get the Mylar.
Okay, alright, we don't. We don't sign the Mylar until the period goes by.
Sure.
I can file this with the town clerk tomorrow.
And that starts your.
And that starts the clock.
When does that, who records that assailant, Jim?
You guess.
You guys.
Alright, that's why, that's why I wasn't sure, and, and Jared wasn't either.
Yeah.
And what we wanna do is, we wanna, you're gonna have to have the, um, was it Sawyer, the engineer?
Yeah.
Get in touch with me, because both the MOD, which we've signed now. And the peer review done by the water department has to go on a last page of the Mylars.
Alright.
Okay, that's how they file it now.
Yep.
Alright, so you're just gonna have to have him get in touch with me.
Mm-hmm.
He's, it's, you know, twenty days from now, so I can give him.
Yeah, you give him that, he can include it.
And then we'll sign the Mylar.
And then we bring those to you, you sign them, and then we'll record.
Okay, and then, and, uh, you know, side note, since we're talking about, but if you do have an intro pack to hand out, so we can get a briefing going. To possibilities for the town to start looking in, because, you know, we're, we're slow.
Alright.
On getting, getting the motion going here, but it'd be nice to have an intro pack that, you know, and, uh, throw a title on it, affordable housing in Groveland, and just kick it to us.
We have an affordable housing board.
Yeah, okay, there we go, there's the start, okay, and then you'll probably have to come in a couple times, do the song and dance, and then the town's got to figure out where to put it, and then ask, uh.
Alright.
Do something with it, I suppose, but at least we'll get the ball rolling.
The one thing I would suggest is, this time around, that people who will see this thing through, work together on this. Because the real problem I've been seeing is, I see a lot of people sit around a table in there.
Yeah.
And they talk, but nothing happens. And what I'd rather s- have is people that get together on this and make it happen, that's what we need, that's the type of people we need.
Well, we got a committee that's there, that's their charter, that's.
That's their charter.
Okay, so we'll get that going, um, alright.
So just to be clear again, after the, um, town clerk certifies, certifies this. Then we have to get the Mylar copy to go with that?
Yeah, he just takes it, puts it on Mylar, just makes a sheet out of it.
Yeah, yeah, he make, he did all the pages and goes on.
The, our attorney will take it to the registry and, of these, and, uh, have it, uh.
Yeah.
And then, and then we have a bunch of copies come out, yeah.
We have to sign it, though.
Yeah.
You sign, what do you sign?
We sign the Mylar.
Why would you sign the Mylar?
Yeah, and you have to wait twenty days. Twenty days.
Then we'll do the Mylar once we get.
Yes.
Twenty, twenty days after, after the town clerk certifies it, right?
Yes, tomorrow.
That'll be tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah, right, right, yeah.
Alright, so we'll have him follow up in three weeks from tomorrow or whenever, from today.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Alright.
That's good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for actually coming and pulling all that stuff out of them.
Okay.
We'll see if we can move it on this other stuff.
Alright.
Thank you.
Good night, thank you.
Thank you, Debbie.
Wood Street Lot Line.
No, I don't care.
What do we got?
Uh, we're just moving a lot of line.
Which one is this one?
Line number four.
Coming out?
Uh, just potential buyer wants.
Same line.
Here we are.
Okay.
Yep. This is a little unclear because it's too. This was a lot that you guys previously approved. And we're just adding a twenty-five foot strip to the side of it.
It's coming out of.
It's around this back piece.
I forget, what is this back piece now?
Uh, it's just the remainder of forty-five acres of land that he, Wood Street's down.
Oh, it looks pretty wet.
Oh, yeah.
Just a town.
The majority of the piece is actually, uh, in the wetlands buffer zone.
Yeah.
Just this actual, little small back corner is actually where.
That's the log cabin in that lot?
Uh, the log cabin's here.
Oh.
Yep.
Was there another one there?
This is a new lot.
That's a new lot.
I'm trying to look at it.
I don't remember.
So the log cabin's there.
And then here's our new lot.
Your four main.
Oh, so there was two lots? Oh, we signed it.
No, we already signed the first one.
Signed up.
We've been here previously.
And now he just wants more space.
Yeah, we had taken the log cabin.
And where's Latham's access on the far side?
He's way over here.
Okay, good, alright, thank you.
He's on the other side, yeah.
Yeah, okay, remember we worked that lot out, okay.
Petroska used to be right in front of the beer and everything.
Okay, so this is Debbie's piece that sold it or?
Yeah, uh, Debbie's family sold forty-five acres.
To you guys?
Yeah.
Okay, anything else coming out of this? Is this it?
This is it.
Okay, so what are you doing with this later? Do I need to town?
Affordable housing there?
And a wetland?
Very well affordable housing.
Is it a submarine?
He's got some uplands up.
That'll be a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Forty acres, meaning five acres of it is actually wetlands.
Oh, okay. It's just all situated.
Yeah, a good portion of it's in the buffer.
But you've got real bad, tough terrain though.
Yeah, it's a lot of land that's over twenty percent slope and, uh.
Yeah, big cliff.
Yeah, it's a big hill.
Yeah. So.
How about the access to get into that? Is that by where the chicken coop, where they're building the new house?
They tore down a chicken coop, um, and Mike Crowe is building a new house up there and there's an access strip with an existing wetlands crossing there. Well, I mean, the, the pond, the wetland is actually, um, from what I understand, a, a pond that they constructed for the use of the chicken coop. They used to have some sort of piping that went through to pump water in and out of the coop. And.
They need water.
To dam it up.
Yeah, of course.
Got a lot of water coming off that hill across the street. You get all you want.
So it'd be.
Like Niagara Falls down the other end.
Um, I don't know, I don't know what to do with the rest of the land.
Donation to the town. No, I mean, really, you don't have to pay taxes on it. You're getting a buffer.
Can you get us.
Initially, this was supposed to be that, you know, with that subdivision, this was supposed to be that greenway area that people could use and walk and trails and goes up to the, connects on the water tank on the other side that connects that whole area through, so you know, that's always something good to do.
They were gonna have.
Conservation will take it in a second.
I believe that their plan was to have a wetlands crossing here with a access trail that went, access road that went around to the water tower at the top of the hill.
Yeah.
And a trail that continued around the hill out to their road. But their, their road that was cut them through had, I think, like thirty or forty foot cuts into the grade.
Yeah.
To get the road in.
Yeah.
And then they needed to excavate further to get house sites in.
Yeah.
And fill further on the downhill side, get house sites in. I don't see how it was physically practical to do, but.
Okay, well, for this, for this thing here, you get your form and your fifty, you get fifty bucks, right, for lot line testing?
Yep.
You want some new doors, lot line testing? And what's the address on this?
Twenty-three Wood Street.
Twenty-three Wood Street.
Number, your checkbook?
Yeah, there you go.
There's two Mylars.
This is the new Mylar, right?
Yes.
You need one copy, one Mylar, and then the usual disc and recorded copies, etc.
So I think there's, you guys want paper copies?
Just one.
Just one.
Just one and.
And six, I think it's reported.
Yeah, it's seven actually. You guys want to start signing? Go ahead, Ben. Give it my hat off. Here, look, it's the pen keeper.
How much you wrote that check for?
Fifty bucks.
No, it's a hundred and fifty thousand.
We just got that check.
It's in cash.
I wrote that one earlier.
This is the night.
Wrote earlier was made out to the IRS.
Yeah, yeah.
Did you ever get their system back up?
Is this two we gotta sign?
Should be.
Uh, no, just the one.
Just the one Mylar, yeah.
Always remember you have the right to pay the least amount of taxes you want.
Grown, fifty bucks, twenty-three Wood Street.
Okay, in the vault.
Hey, get those, he needs the four mains.
There we go.
Hey, hey, wrong vault.
It's in the vault.
You're on camera.
Oh, yeah, he's had the, he's had the money, yeah.
Yeah, right, I'm getting mugged all the way.
So Groveland has an affordable housing board?
Yes.
Does anybody know anybody that's on it?
Yeah, you know, I don't know anymore.
It's a floating situation.
I'm pretty sure that I can find out if I was looking at her website real quick. We, we do have one. She might not know the answer either, honestly, but.
Groveland has a, has some provisions in their zoning for like, I think you guys call it a CSD.
Yeah.
And it seems very similar to what Georgetown does and they call it an OSRD.
Yep.
But Georgetown's division has some bonuses available if, if developer actually includes affordable housing units. I don't think that's included in there.
You know, our CSD is a little bit different, but we, we've used it quite a few times.
Well, the other thing is.
Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't.
We changed it so that it has to be sewered.
Yeah.
If you wanna.
So the.
And the reason why we did.
Your last town meeting, you guys slapped that word sewer in there.
Yeah, we did, well, we needed it.
Dynamically changes some things, in my opinion. Like, I thought the intention of the bylaw was to, to preserve some undeveloped space.
You still have to do that.
If you look at the sewer map, the sewer service map.
Yeah.
Covers very dense, redeveloped space, you know, the space that it preserves.
Yeah, but you're free to extend the sewer.
Yeah, um, if you guys could get Nichols back in here to extend their line down to.
That was the plan and they were going to, and it was the town that, that was supposed to go all the way down.
They were supposed to loop down through Wood Street and taking, uh, Seven Star.
You got it, right, and Seven Star, right.
There's only three members, there are four vacancies.
Which like one?
You'll never get up.
No, no, vacancy.
The way that's going. What has to happen, I can tell you right now, is, is that the water department, who has the same a charter that the electric light department has, they're a separate corporation. Uh, they can go out and, you know, float bonds. And the better way to get this thing jump-started instead of hooking up every.
You know, we need one card.
Does he have his sign from?
Only before, yeah, he's getting, you had endorsed it, it's given to him, or you, and then he's gonna take it to the clerk and be here.
Yep.
Just sign off for this?
All three.
Alright, go over to Kirk, stamp them. We just, Mylar, we get one, she gets one, you get one for the registry, seven copies certified.
Can I just ask you guys a couple more questions as you're all having to be here?
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
That's fifty bucks.
CSDs have to have sewage now.
Yeah.
Uh, in the opinion of the board, is that something that's flexible with an increase in open space or an increase?
No, you still gotta do fifty percent of the space.
Yeah, but like if, some other towns' bylaws will give the board flexibility to adjust requirements based on increases in things like affordable housing.
Like a waiver.
Like a waiver, yeah. Or their bylaws are written such that, at the discretion of the board, they may waive things that are determined to be in the public interest.
You put a pump station in at the bottom and then pump it up the Nichols.
Yeah.
You could do it.
Is that, are you planning Wood Street, is that what you're talking about?
Well, I mean, it, it leaps to mind as, in my opinion, a good spot to have.
Well, that's what originally was supposed to be there.
But like.
A CSD.
A CSD type development.
Right.
Um, so when I got involved with the property, that word sewer wasn't in there.
Yeah, okay, so.
So.
It is now.
Yeah, no, so I'm just trying to figure out if it's.
If you wanna, you should, bring it down.
He's just trying to, I mean, don't.
The cost as soon as I saw.
Discourage him while he, uh, he's trying to fill us out and see if we will work it, work some development with him, you know?
So from, from what I understand, Nichols Village wanted a payment of about a million dollars to bring sewer through their property, which is a non-starter for me because a million dollars divided out over thirty houses.
Did they bring it down the emergency road? Isn't it sitting there still?
No, no.
They didn't bring it up the top.
And he could do a force bait up to there.
But force baits are relatively cheap.
Yeah, yeah, you could do a force bait up to there. You'd have to bring the sewer down, have the pump station at that low end of Wood Street.
Um, your subdivision regulations also require that, um, certain public services like water and sewage are brought to the end of your property, brought to the end of the property. My question with Nichols Village is, where'd they bring it to? The middle of their lot? How does that serve?
That's what I was thinking, it came down the fire road.
The water comes down the fire road.
It was supposed to go all the way through and that was a town botched job.
The, the water, I think, actually goes up the fire road from the new tower.
Right, well, no, the new tower was afterwards, right, but they, they brought the water down, that's twelve inch main. But you could put a little, a pump station at the bottom of Wood Street and pump it up the Nichols.
And I still can't get onto the Nichols property without paying them.
Yeah, but they won a million dollars, they won.
Well, that's, that's what they wanted before.
No, I don't think.
Yeah, the, the reason why we wanted with sewage really is, it's what's left in the town to develop. And the fact that the sewer system has been stopped since it, it stopped in nineteen seventy-eight. We really, the only things we have done really is the two schools, they're on pumps. We have a couple of subdivisions that are on pumps. They paid for that.
Two schools now.
Hmm?
Two schools.
Three schools.
Bagnall's on a pump.
Yeah, Bagnall's on, but you mean the middle and Pitt Ducky, yes.
Well, I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah, but it, the, the real, the real problem is nothing else got done. And the only way sewage is gonna be done is it jumpstarts with money. Because if you go to each homeowner on a street that you need to take it up to and you find the people way up the top want it, but the people down below just redid their septic systems, it ain't going anywhere. And that's what we're up against in this town.
Property done.
Now, when, when, when we got all that federal money years ago, um, I mean, we almost fell over what they gave us. It, it actually ended up ninety-two percent. Alright, today, nobody's getting any money like that, nobody. The only thing they're doing federal with money right now is bridges and that's it. So it's, it's, it has to be a jumpstart by the community, but you gotta change your mindset.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, we don't, we don't control that. Don't knock one of Water Sewer Board's doors.
Yeah, that's their back, maybe they'll help you out.
I mean, the only other.
I don't know what to tell you.
Interest that I thought you guys would have is, um, how interested you are in, in seeing affordable housing get built in Groveland. If that's a motivating factor for.
You still need sewer though. The trick is gonna be how do we get it in there?
Sure, yeah, well, I, I'm never gonna bring sewer to this, like, in general.
Yeah.
You don't think so? You're not far from it though.
Yeah, I can't, I can't go onto their property without paying them.
Well, I mean, if we talk to them or something.
They take, they might take a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Yeah, it's.
It makes sense though, and then if you extend it and other people tied on.
That's, have you, have you talked to them?
Oh, no, not directly, no.
You, you know, this guy I'm dealing with, Jared Stewart, who was the. You may wanna talk to him first, you know, without going to Dick Cammett. And he may say, no, you gotta talk to Dick. Alright?
Is Dick the older gentleman?
Yes, yes.
He's the head of the trust.
He's the head of the trust.
We're all wrapping, wrapping up, absolutely.
We're done. You guys ready?
I'll just give you, I'll just give you updates real quick. I called Cammett and asked for the Asbills.
Yeah.
Alright, Sunset and Homestead. He, he finally emailed me back, uh, this morning and saying, you know, they'll be here. They'll, they'll probably email to me tomorrow.
Okay.
You know, 'cause we can't keep this thing going. I mean, the, the hoes are on a warpath and everything, wanna close out and all that, but um, Billis, I haven't had any calls whatsoever at all. I don't know if the sale went through or what.
What did Denise say about the deed?
Huh?
Denise with the deed?
Well, it, it's, it's a touchy situation because you, you can't take it from Billis.
No, no, what did Denise say when she got it? She's upset, she's gonna wait, she's gonna send it to the council, what's she gonna do?
We don't have a deed. We have, we have basically what would be a deed.
Yeah.
But we have to get this buyer, the buyer wants to close on the property.
Right.
Which is supposed to be.
Then he'll do the deed.
Right, so.
But isn't he supposed to close like tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay, so we haven't heard anything.
We haven't heard anything.
Alright, so let them figure it out.
I mean, it's floating, that's the problem.
Alright, well, let's.
Well, we saw it in Friday then, so it doesn't go anywhere.
Right, okay, next.
Nelson and Sewell Street, okay, they'll be coming in. Alright, the engineer's working on it, I think he.
They're doing some clearing or something down there, right? Did I see that? Yeah, did you guys see that too?
Yeah, we, we've been out there, we did a sidewalk, you know, there's two selectmen, two from the planning board, you know, me and Bobby went out there. You know, it was a couple of weeks ago.
The engineer wants to, um, and he brought up a good point, he wants to have, have a licensed site inspector looking at it, looking at the material coming in.
That's the.
And the compaction.
Email I sent to you, so.
Because if he wants to build a building on it.
Yeah.
I figured you really can, but maybe if you can get a hundred percent compaction or something, ninety.
And so what the sledge is.
Yeah.
It's coming in, so, alright, anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, motion's adjourned.
Okay, second.
Okay. Aye.
Do we have to unanimously, unanimously vote to him?
Thank you for watching.
Oh, no, I'm just wondering, like, if that's ever happened, if someone's like, no, I'm really not done yet.
Okay, what was the time?